Would you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council.
It's not very loud, so he'll turn it up.
Kay, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Osbacher?
Here.
Gavron?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
Jeffers?
Here.
McComber?
Here.
Roland?
Here.
Zanfordino?
Here.
The minutes of the regular meeting that was held on March 7th, 2016 were distributed to Council prior to this meeting. Is there any approval or additions to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The minutes are approved. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
I have no correspondence.
Thank you. So we will move directly into our official reports to be led off by our Mayor Edwards.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members of council and all assembled. Just a couple of quick items. Heather Saylor has been working much of today in trying to get things set up for the big breakfast tomorrow morning, the interfaith breakfast. So she's not here, but I would be remiss if I did not remind you all, if you can, your schedules. I know some of you have understandable conflicts, but if your schedules so permit, I hope you might be able to attend the interfaith breakfast at the Junior Fair Building tomorrow morning starting at 7:30. It will be over by 9:00. And the committee has worked very, very hard, Heather leading the charge for the city, but pastors Tom Mott and Gary Saunders, along with the committee, Marcy St. John, and I could go through a whole list of folks, but have been working very hard on this. This is the second annual, and so it appears that we're going to have a strong turnout. And I especially want to commend the owner, the family of Southside Six, who will be providing the breakfast there gratis. So there's no charge for the breakfasts or anything. But then they'll be over promptly at, the program will end promptly at 9:00. Just one other reminder, I see Chief Hetrick is here, of course, along with Chief Sanderson, but Chief Hetrick on Wednesday and will be joining with Chief Mull of the BGSU Police Department and members of their respective staff groups and so forth, their officers, their fellow officers, will be putting on a program at Tim Horton's on Wednesday from 8:00 to 10:00, Coffee with the Cops. And I hope to be able to pop out there and join with him a little bit there, Chief. So let's hope you get lots of interested folks that will stop by at Tim Horton's on Wednesday from 8:00 until 10:00. And you're going to be there, right? Okay. No pressure. The other thing I just want to mention is that the State of the City program will be once again at the end of April. This is April 28th. It will be held once again, as we've done now a number of times, at the Wood County District Public Library. It will start at 8:00 on the 28th. And among other things, there'll be a report from council on terms of council's priorities. We'll be also hearing from utilities, economic development. I see Sue Clark here, and you've already been asked, right, Sue? I know. It's one of your favorite things to do at 8:00 in the morning. But that's when you have your board meetings, at 8:00 in the morning. Because is that because Mike Marsh makes you to... Okay, okay. But we'll also be hearing, of course, our municipal administrator, Lori Tretter, and will be providing us with a good outlook on the financial front as well there. So that's April 28th, starting at 8:00 in the morning, and that will only be a one-hour program. Mr. President, members of council, that concludes my report unless you have some questions of me.
Questions for the mayor.
I do want to thank you for your hearing, because it was an unusual hour at 4:30 to have a meeting of the Finance Committee, Mr. Chair, but I think it was very helpful. A lot of good information was shared and some good comments from the members of the levy committee and others in attendance there. And also, I want to commend you for setting up the outlook, the process that we'll be going through for the 2016 housing survey, exterior housing survey. I found that, as I suspect you did, very, very interesting. Some of you have been through it before. I saw the results from before, but was not involved directly in that process. So I'm really actually looking forward to it, because I think it will work out, meld nicely with the housing survey we're doing with the help of consultants and so forth. It's another important part of this, of this very complex picture, but an important picture there that we have to keep working on. But thank you for your indulgence there, for that, hearing that from Lana and the outlook for the 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter. Questions for Lori.
Thank you. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor, we said, is not here this evening. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
I'd be more brief than I was earlier today. So just a few things going on, as always, in Parks and Rec, but they say a picture is worth a thousand words. So since you do not want a thousand words from me today, the Phase One project at the nature preserve is underway. So I will pass some pictures from earlier today. The plumbing is in. As soon as that is inspected, they will be pouring the foundation this week, hopefully weather-dependent, but it looks good. So that, wanted to share that with you, and you can enjoy the pictures. So I have mentioned on a couple of different occasions that we do have, as we are progressing on our five-year master plan, we do have some focus group meetings coming up. And I will pass this flyer out to you guys, although let me know what I'm talking about. But we do have a five date set. I believe I announced that at the last council meeting, but April 6th, 13th, 20th, May 11th, and 18th, they are all at 7:00 PM at the community center. We will have free childcare. They are focused, well, they're community focus group meetings, but they are focused on particular topics. And I do want to stress that the topic for each one will be the topic of that meeting. So if residents have ideas or thoughts or questions about, say, swim lessons, then they do not want to come to the one on April 13th on natural area parks. So I just want to be very clear on that. Our facilitator, Dr. Shannon Orr, from the Political Science Department at BGSU, is very good, but she told me she does run a tight ship. So we want to be respectful of people's times. We have some questions that we need the community to answer, and then obviously, we want to get their feedback. So having the, kind of our services and facilities and parks kind of split up, so we can focus in on them, will really get the most value for both the people participating and for our outcomes. So after all of these, Dr. Shannon Orr and her grad students that will be helping will kind of compile all the information and get that to us. And then staff and park board will put together our master plan and get that to park board and to you guys. So please help spread the word about these. They're obviously only as beneficial as people coming and participating. If someone cannot make any of these, or let's say the one that is pertinent to their concerns or questions, they may email Dr. Orr directly, and her email is on that flyer. Summer programming, believe it or not, is, planning for that is in full swing, and we do anticipate our brochure will be out in just a couple of weeks. And we're busy starting to interview summer seasonal employees. So it's kind of an exciting time. The weather is not always the best this time of year. It's hit or miss, but we can think of summer fondly at the Parks and Recreation Department. The other thing I would mention, I think I've mentioned it before, but please like our Facebook page. Everybody like our Facebook page. It is updated daily. We try to have some fun with it and get some pictures out there as well. So fun in Parks and Rec. That's what we try to do. And last but not least, the 13th Annual, and I will pass these down, Adult Egg Scramble is occurring on Friday, April 8th. And registration is underway. We have valuable prizes coming in daily. That is for adults. If you haven't heard of this before, it's an absolute riot. It is at night with flashlights. We don't hide the eggs. That would be a big no-no. Invite people into your park at night in the dark and hide them. So they're just kind of out there. So it truly is a scramble. That's why it's called a scramble. But lots of really cool prizes, either inside the egg or a slip of paper referring to that, that we'll get you after. So it is, it's worth the price of admission just for the hilarity of it, but you could get some really good prizes as well. So kind of your chance to act like a kid again and have some fun.
Is the top prize $1,000? No, it doesn't say that. I'm just...
Oh, okay. No. Like, I didn't make that flyer. I hope it doesn't say that.
I just knew it was a good...
No, no, no. There are cash prizes. Some of it, Sandy, depends on what kind of donations that we get, but typically, we have like $100, $50, $75. There are cash prizes. I'm like, you gave me a heart attack there.
Okay. No, no, no. I just knew that there were financial prizes. I'm sorry.
There typically are some cash prizes, and those are the golden eggs, yes. Several years ago, when the Wii first came out, we had a Wii, and that was just crazy. So, yeah. Any other questions that will not give me a heart attack?
I just wanted to see if you were on top.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. See me sweat some more today? Yep. Park board.
Thank you. To the attorney, Mr. Marsh. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
Just wanted to update you from the last meeting. I was in DC at the American Public Power Association Legislative Rally. That's an annual conference that they do where we all go to DC and try to talk to our representatives and senators about issues that affect public power. So during that time, we did get a chance to meet with Representative Latta's staff, probably about 40 minutes with his staff, 45 minutes. And we did also meet with Senator Portman for some time. Smaller group, I was not included in the group, met with Senator Brown mainly due to the size of the room that they had available during that meeting time. So a few of us that went did go to talk with Senator Brown as well. Many other states that are involved, not just with AMP, but public power, were there, and they also met with their legislators, talk about issues that are affecting public power. The big, the three of the big items we talked about, for the most part, were changes to tax-exempt financing at the federal level and how that impacts not just public power, but also locally here for city projects that we might do here locally and fund through tax-exempt bonds, municipal bonds. The second thing was the federal sequestration impact with the federal budget and how it is impacting the proceeds that we get from the federal government for the Build America Bonds that were issued for some of our generation projects. And if they weren't going to correct that error, at least have them stop extending it. And what they've done in past years is every, they extend it for another year, then the new budget cycle comes around, they'll do it another year. And so we just never see an end date when sequestration is going to stop affecting those bonds. And the third, the third big item was we try to address the cost impacts that we see from the transmission capacity charges that we get on our bill that are passed through to us from PJM and also from First Energy on the transmission side. And those are things that we really have no, no control over, but obviously affect us greatly on our bill. I think right now, those two components add up to about 40%, of our monthly power bill, which whereas a couple of years ago, it probably was well under 15%. So it's been a pretty drastic increase recently. So that was, that was kind of the highlights of the legislative rally. After we got back, that was, that was March 7th to March 9th, we got back on the 10th. And then Representative Latta was actually back here at the time, and he was interested in taking a tour of our water treatment plant. And so we gave him a tour the next day. Chad Johnson, our superintendent, gave a tour of that facility. Was interested in how we treat our water from the Mommy River, how we deal with harmful algae blooms. So we showed him the conventional plant and the GAC, which helps take out the contaminants from the algae, as well as the membrane plant and the microfiltration, the reverse osmosis process that takes it out from the membrane side. He seemed very interested. Asked a lot of good questions, and I think he got some good information about how we deal with treating water, provide to our customers. That's all I have for tonight, unless you have other questions.
Questions for Mr. O'Connell. Brian, just briefly, thank you for attending that legislative rally in DC. Obviously, those three issues that you mentioned are important and affect Bowling Green in a number of ways. So I think it's really important that we continue to engage with our elected officials, both in Columbus and in Washington DC. So I appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule to do that.
Sure. My pleasure.
Very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
Want to give you an update on the Third Street Wireline Project. They're still humming along down Third Street. Soon, we'll be moving to Clough between Prospect and Summit. We're going to see if maybe we can make that coordinate with school spring break to alleviate the pressure with the St. Owls and the kids moving in there. We'll know more at the end of the week. A little bit of bedrock has been present, so that slowed them down a little bit. Large item collection started today. We have gone through Ward 1, and we're in Ward 2, and fairly heavy locations. Should be done with that by the end of the week. Also want to give you an update on the, part of legislation tonight is for Columbia Gas to do work through Lot 2. They want to get into the little brick alley between Panera and Sam Bee's to do an upgrade of their facilities. They want to tap their gas main on Prospect, bore under Lot 2. We want to get Lot 2 kind of taken care of with this, so that we can pave it this summer, without having anything kind of pending over our heads. So that's why we asked for expedited movement on that, so they can get their ducks in a row, move on that project, and then allow us to pave it this summer without having to worry about any gas work. That's my report, and if you have any questions with me.
Questions for Mr. Kraft.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward now to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
From the Finance Committee, I have a resolution transferring previously appropriated funds, and I have an ordinance authorizing the sale or disposal of former transit service vehicles by the municipal administrator as no longer necessary for municipal purposes.
Thank you, Bob.
From the Public Utilities Committee, I have an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into a contract or contracts with Toray Membrane USA Incorporated for the purchase of reverse osmosis media replacement without advertising and bidding, and to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the installation of the reverse osmosis media at the water treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Ms. Charters.
I have an ordinance from the Public Lands and Buildings Committee, an ordinance granting an easement to Columbia Gas of Ohio Inc. for property located on South Main Street and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Teresa. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President, most of you were there here for it, and some of you in the audience, but we had a finance committee, a committee meeting, as was referred to, to discuss the park levy. And we didn't make any particular decisions or recommendations, but Mrs. Ottley gave us a presentation. We asked a lot of questions, and I thought we had a lot of pretty frank and good discussion about the levy. It's a productive meeting, even though we did not really vote on anything.
Good. Thank you, Bob. I would just add that, just to reinforce the next step in that process, we will be forwarding, or members of the Finance Committee will be forwarding to other members of council information that we received from both Director Ottley and city administration this evening. We'll give them some time to review that information. And then prior to our next council meeting on April 4th, we'll conduct a committee of the whole meeting to allow all council members to discuss openly in a public meeting the different options available to us as we consider that levy request for Parks and Recs.
What time is that meeting?
6:00 or 6:00 PM.
6:00 AM.
Sue, I hope I can just make sure you're there. What also, member, under council committee reports, prior to this meeting, we did conduct a committee of the whole meeting to discuss the upcoming housing survey to take place in Bowling Green. The Health Department provided some general, or some very helpful information. Basic timeline is that survey will begin in April. It will actually be conducted April through August. In September, in November, they'll be compiling data and generating reports. And in December, late November, early December, then it would be their expectation to present to council the results of the five-year survey. So we very much look forward to that process. Are there additional county, or council committee reports tonight? Okay. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for lobby visitation. At this point, we ask anyone in attendance at this evening's meeting that would be interested in addressing council on any item that is on our agenda or any other item of business pertaining to the operations of the city to do so. If you are interested, we would ask that you approach the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sidney Brooks. I'm actually here with Dance Marathon at BGSU. We're a student organization on campus. We raise money for our local Children's Miracle Network Hospital, which is actually in Toledo. So I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak at these meetings. We always appreciate the opportunity to reach out to the community. We always appreciate all the support that we receive from all of you. With our events quickly approaching, it's actually in two weeks. It's on April 2nd and 3rd from 4:00 PM until 4:00 PM. So it's a 24-hour event. We have a lot of different fundraising promotion nights that are going to happen next week, which is March 28th through the 31st. So on Monday, the 28th, we have a promotion night with Beckett's from 3:00 until close, and then El Zarape on Tuesday from 5:00 until close, Easy Street on Wednesday from 4:00 until close, and then Cookie Jar is all day. So if you like birthday cake cookie, this is your day to go ahead and do that. A portion of your bill is going to benefit Children's Miracle Network Hospitals. So we always appreciate any support that we receive from you guys. And then on, excuse me, on March 31st, our bikers are actually heading off for Bikes for Tykes. It's a 180-mile bike ride from Cincinnati to Bowling Green, Ohio, again, all benefiting Children's Miracle Network Hospitals. So if you're interested in kind of wishing them a good luck on their ride, that's from 3:00 to 4:00 PM at the BGSU Ice Arena. And then our main event Ziggy-thon is on, like I said, it starts at 4:00 PM on April 2nd. We also do a fundraiser where we sell different types of balloons. We do like this really large balloon drop in the end for a celebration. Those can be purchased for maybe someone, like in honor of somebody, in memory of somebody, just because you really want a balloon to fall in your honor. So if you guys are interested in that, please let me know. After the meeting, I will be sitting over there, so if you have any questions at all. And then we also have an alumni and a faculty, staff, and graduate student hour for our main event Ziggy-thon. And the DM Alumni Social is going to be at Grumpy Dave's from 9:00 to 11:00 PM on April 2nd. We always love having alum and getting to know their stories, if they've ever been a part of Dance Marathon, if they ever want to be a part of Dance Marathon in the future. And then our final, like our big finale starts around 2:30. I would personally suggest getting there at 2:00, because it's just, it's a very life-changing experience for everybody that is involved. And that goes until 4:00 PM. So if you guys have the opportunity, we'd really appreciate seeing some familiar faces out there. And then two more little things. We have donor drive boards. So if we have any faculty or staff in the room, we do have a donor drive account specifically for each department. And if one department raises the most amount of money, we have an incentive. I'm not exactly sure what that incentive is just yet, but it's going to be really cool, and we'll be able to hopefully give back to everybody that's given to us as well. And then we also have Adopt a Dancer, Adopt a Biker, which is basically anybody that you think has a really cool story. You'd be able to kind of adopt that person and help them fundraise, maybe help out their social media, maybe help with just morale of the entire event. It can be pretty strenuous, standing for 24 hours on end. So if you guys are interested in any of this, you can either come and talk to me in the back after the meeting, or contact Austin Flores. He's our director of all of our event, and his email is austinf@bgsu.edu. So again, I appreciate you guys allowing me to stand up here, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good luck in your events.
I think I heard that the incentive was $1,000.
You didn't hear from me.
Good evening. I don't have $1,000 for anybody, but I do have an invitation for each of you. My name is Neocles Leontis. I live at 119 North Summit Street still. So I am here to invite the members of city council, and I want to make this invitation public. I also have written invitations for you, because I'm also inviting all the people that work for the city and all the people that live in the city, because I'd like to make you aware of an event that we're planning on April 17th. So it's a little bit ahead of time, so you can put on your calendars. That's a Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at Peace Lutheran Church. It is called Creation Care Celebration Sunday. And at this event, we want to recognize the really amazing number of things that are going on in our city that deserve being recognized at this time. We're recognized in the city, and we've, of course, invited the mayor, and I believe he or one of his representatives will be there. But we want to, and it's because of the many things that the city is doing to promote more sustainable and environmentally responsible public policy. And there's some things happening this year that are just amazing. I'm not just thinking of the solar array, although that is really amazing. So as members of city council, you have also played a role, and you will be continuing to play an important role in legislating the necessary changes we will need to be making over the next few years. So we want to recognize the efforts so far, and of course, we'll be brainstorming about things in the future. This event is being organized by a new organization called the Black Swamp Green Team. It's an ecumenical group of religious and community leaders and ordinary citizens committed to greening northwest Ohio to ensure that our region does its part in the worldwide effort to avoid climate disruption and ensure a sustainable and prosperous future for our children. The afternoon will include a meal. It's going to be a low-impact meal, locally sourced with, from our local CSAs, music by our local Grub's ukulele band, which is a big draw, and a lot of you have heard them play. There'll be a keynote address. There'll be activities for the children, so bring the whole family. There'll be displays and workshops and networking. The recognition will follow the keynote, and it will be around 1:30. We're also going to be recognized at the university, because it's the other big player in town, and they are, of course, they've drawn up a plan to become climate, to become carbon neutral by 2040. It's a very important plan, and they've made good steps in that direction. We'll be recognizing them. And I'd like to ask your help, that you are all very well networked and know what's going on in the community. Help us identify other organizations, large and small, that are doing something, conserve energy, to reduce the impact on the environment, to make our town more sustainable. We want to invite them and want to recognize all those efforts there. And we already have several other organizations we'll be inviting, but the two big ones are the city and the university. So with that, I will give you each your invitation. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Neeklees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neeklees. Are there others who would like to address council this evening? Seeing none, we will move forward with the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3623 for first reading. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give resolution 3623 at second and third reading.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes. The motion passes. The rules are suspended for resolution 3623.
Resolution number 3623 for second and third reading.
Resolution number 3623 for second and third reading. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
Move to adopt Resolution 3623.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gavron.
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution 3623 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8503 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the sale or disposal of former transit service vehicles by the municipal administrator as no longer necessary for municipal purposes. Ordinance number 8504 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into a contract or contracts with Toray Membrane USA Incorporated for the purchase of reverse osmosis media replacement without advertising and bidding, and to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the installation of the reverse osmosis media at the water treatment plant and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 8505 for first reading. Ordinance granting an easement to Columbia Gas of Ohio for property located on South Main Street and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gavron.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance number 8505 at second and third reading. Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gavron.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8505.
Mr. President. I gotta read it first. Oh.
Ordinance number 8505 for second and third reading. Ordinance granting an easement to Columbia Gas of Ohio Incorporated for property located on South Main Street and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gavron.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for ordinance number 8505. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gavron.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 8505.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gavron.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8505.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to reiterate what Brian Kraft mentioned earlier, that Columbia Gas is gonna be laying some new pipeline, looks like in Lot 2, and they plan to start working the next couple of weeks, so they need to get moving on this, and that's the reason for the emergency.
Thank you. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gavron.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8505 is adopted.
Legislation for second reading. Resolution number 3621 for second reading. Resolution adopting amendments to the policy and procedure manual for the BG Transit. Resolution number 3622 for second reading. Resolution determining to proceed to submit to the electors of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, the question of an additional tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation for the purpose of providing 2.0 mills for parks and recreation purposes in the city of Bowling Green, Ohio. Ordinance number 8492 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the cleaning of uniforms for the Department of Safety. Ordinance number 8493 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to participate in the State of Ohio Department of Transportation Sodium Chloride Rock Salt Purchase Agreement for the 2016-2017 winter season. Ordinance number 8494 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in the State of Ohio or federal purchasing programs for the purchase of vehicles and equipment, as well as the trade-in, transfer, or sale of vehicles and equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes. Ordinance number 8495 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to apply for a loan and execute an agreement with the Ohio EPA, Ohio Water Development Authority, for water pollution control loan fund funding for the design, equipment, and construction of the Connyatt Pump Station and force main improvements. Ordinance number 8496 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the construction of the Connyatt Pump Station and force main improvements. Ordinance number 8497 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to apply for a loan and execute an agreement with the Ohio EPA, Ohio Water Development Authority, for water supply revolving loan account funding for the design, equipment, and construction of the water treatment plant, rapid sand filter, and miscellaneous improvement projects. Ordinance number 8498 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the water treatment plant, rapid sand filter, and miscellaneous improvement projects. Ordinance number 8499 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for water distribution projects. Ordinance number 8500 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for sewer improvement projects. Ordinance number 8501 for second reading. Ordinance determining over-recovered power supply costs as of December 31, 2015, and establishing a reimbursement schedule. Ordinance number 8502 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to accept and execute a utility easement from Smith Auto Properties LLC, located at 1303 North Main Street. Legislation for third reading. Resolution number 3618 for third reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing amended Community Development Block Grant Housing Policy and Procedures Manual.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to adopt Resolution 3618.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gavron.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3618 is adopted.
Resolution number 3619 for third reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing and amending Housing Revolving Loan Fund Program Policy and Procedures Manual.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to adopt Resolution 3619.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gavron.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3619 is adopted.
Resolution number 3620 for third reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and execute a contract upon grant application approval under the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program as authorized by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to adopt Resolution 3620.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gavron.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.